You have a list of upcoming events and the little brochures that we gave out. The next debates we have coming up, I'll mention at the end of the program again. I want to thank Cleo Haraford here for coming tonight and studying all the questions that were submitted and choosing them. I have not even seen the ones that she chose from the list. Again, thanks to the audience. And at this point, I will ask Cleo to read the debate rules, and then she can begin asking the questions. We do have a wireless microphone over here that you guys can pass back and forth. Thank you.
The debate rules are as follows. Each candidate will be allowed two minutes of two-minute introduction. Candidates will present in alphabetical order. A yellow flag will be displayed by the timekeeper 15 seconds before time is up. A red flag will be displayed when time is finished. I will ask questions which have been submitted anonymously by voters in the community. The name of the person who is to answer first will be drawn from a pool of candidate names. The question will then pass to the person left until each person has had an opportunity to respond. Each candidate will have up to 90 seconds to answer the questions accordingly. Yellow or red flag timekeeping will apply. If any candidate makes a remark which is directed toward another specific candidate, that candidate will be allowed 45 seconds to respond or rebut. Yellow or red flag timekeeping will apply. Following approximately 75 minutes of question and answer, each candidate in reverse alphabetical order will be allowed an additional 1.5 minutes to make closing statements. Again, yellow, red flag, keep timekeeping will apply. Candidates who do not respect the timekeeping rules may be disqualified from participating in the remainder of the week.
Did you hear that?
We will begin our introductions with Maria Correst.
Good evening. My name is Maria Garasol. And I have to say that I came to the city of Lynn in 1980s. I have three children who all attended public school in Lynn and graduated also, one of my grandsons graduated from English high school. So I have six grandchildren, but the oldest one, Yatra, two years ago graduated from English high school. I have to say that some people might say, why are you running for reelection for school committee? It's because education is my passion. I was a teacher back in my native country, Dominican Republic. So when I came here, I was unable to pursue that same occupation due to the fact that my English was not too good. So I went to North Shore Community College, I do my English, I got a social degree over there. But really, I believe that we need to bring different voices in the community. And I represent the classroom person, but overall, I think that my passion for education made me to understand what parents talk me about, teachers and students. Most of the time, when you see my vote, it's always about students. It's always how it's going to affect our students. So I believe that my vote is the voices of parents, teachers, and overall students. I ask you, please, to vote for me, give him one of your six votes. We have to say 77. But I really want to continue in that field because this city has a higher population of students, who the minority of students are the majority. But overall, it's because I care about education. I want to fight for equal and fair education for everybody. Thank you.
My name is Donika Pollard, and I presently sit on the Lynn School Committee. I'm Mary, my husband Harry, and I have four children, all of whom attended public school here in Lynn. All four graduate from Lynn Classical High School, and I'm a grandparent of three children. I'm also have the privilege of being a former mom to 19 foster kids, and almost all of them were in the Lynn public school system when I have them. So I know the system well, and I'm passionate about it. I loved having my kids in the Lynn public school system. I'm proud of the system. I am retired from AT&amp;T, and I worked there actually for 23 years. I retired at the age of 40, stayed at home, took care of all my kids I had, and got a chance to do foster here. And that's when I became really active in the schools, and became very active in the PTAs. And my kids went to Lincoln Thompson Bridge in Classical. And I was lucky enough to be president of their PTAs, so I totally know a lot of issues, especially, you know, the National PTA talks about, don't use parents as cookie bakers. Use them to make changes and differences in schools. And that's how I was trained in the PTA. So I used to love to attend school committee meetings, and I would be very discouraged, but I'd always go around trying to talk other people into running for school committee. You know, if I saw somebody started having a conversation, they were passionate about the schools, I'd say, why don't you run for school committee? I never really wanted to run, but in the end, one day somebody challenged me and said, you know, why don't you run? So I decided, you know, from that, I'm happy about the way things were going. This is what I need to do. So I did run. I presently work two jobs and would love to have you sit into school again.
Good evening.
Before we continue, we'd just like to mention that John Ford couldn't be here tonight due to a family emergency.
Thank you. And good evening, everyone. I want to first thank the Lynn Community Association and Mary Trahan for hosting this forum. Thank Cleo, our moderator, and also mention, and thank her for the work she does on her online blog. And thank you to the congregation of How About Shalom for having us tonight. Most importantly, I want to thank each and every one of you who took the time to be here, whether you're here learning about the candidates or working for a candidate. Thank you for being here.
My name is Charlie Gallo. I'm the newest member of the school committee. I've been serving since 2012, and since then, I've been trying to work my hardest for our students and for our schools. I first ran for the school committee because education is so important to me, and I wanted to work to better education here in Lynn. I'm a lifelong Lynn resident. My family's lived in Lynn for four generations, and I was the first in my family to graduate from college. I went to law school after that at night and graduated, became an attorney, but returned to the classroom and as a second job, began teaching at North Shore Community College, which I still do now. Some of the initiatives that I've been working on include grant funding to try to help bring more resources to our students and our schools, career development programs in our high schools, safety programs in our elementary schools in partnership with the police and fire departments, youth engagement programs and the Lynn Youth Council initiative, partnerships with businesses and nonprofits, establishment of the Lynn Youth, excuse me, Lynn Community Enrichment Program, which offers recreational and educational courses at Lynn Tech at night for Linners of all ages, putting school committee members online and also educator appreciation. One of the things that makes my candidacy a little unique is my age. I was elected in my twenties. They turned 30 a couple of weeks ago. And over the past couple of decades, young people have been moving out of the city. So what I've tried to do is provide some leadership to reverse that trend, let young people know especially that they should be and can give back to the city. And that's important for the future of our city. I'm running for a second term because I want to continue working hard, and I respectfully ask for one of your six votes. Thank you.
My name is Lorraine Gately, and I'm running for the school committee because I have the unique experience of being a student in Lynn my whole life. Then I was a teacher in Lynn for most of the third year that I taught, and it was in the area of science. Then I was a lead teacher in Pickering Middle School for Science. And now I'd like to try the school committee because I recently retired, and I just can't walk away from these places that I'm in. I just love it. I would at this time like to thank the manager, and I'd also like to thank Cleo and the Lynn Community Association for sponsoring tonight's forum. When I got to the point where I was going to retire, I had to make a decision. What am I going to do with my free time? What am I going to do with all the time that I have? I decided that I want to be a voice for all the people of Lynn. I want to be the voice to your concerns in the public school. My niece is here. She has three daughters in Lynn Public Schools. My sister Pat was a nurse in the Lynn Public Schools. We have been dedicated for, I don't know, decades. I mean, my great aunt was the principal of Lynn Public Schools. And education has just been in my family, and service to the public has always been in my best interest for you. So things that I would like to see after my research is I would like to see new schools because I'm thrilled that after 40 or 50 years, they finally moved the power lines away from the power. So now we're going to have the opportunity to build up the waterfront, bring in new young people to raise their families, and hopefully we'll have new schools for them to go into. And we are a proud community, and I just love it.
Hi, my name is Melissa Gormanello, and only because Charlie brings it up, I'm going to tell you I'm 31. I've lived in Lynn for six years, and I currently work as a family support specialist. I provide support and training for low-income families that have kids with special needs like mental health issues. This is a role that allows me to access a very diverse group of parents, day in and day out. So I hear firsthand what concerns our parents when it comes to education of their children. I'd rather not reiterate what you guys can read in my bio. It's in these great pamphlets that they hand it out. Instead, I'd like to tell you why I'm running for school committee. I'm running because I recognize the need for change. I want to be the voice for change. I want to be the voice for parents and children who attend the Lynn Public Schools. I have directed attention to the Lynn Public Schools because my three children are Lynn Public School kids. My two oldest are products of the Lynn Public School, and my youngest is going to be in class of 2023. He currently attends druthers. I actually brought the oldest with me tonight. Right, stand up today. He wanted to come with me because he helped me advocate at the City Council for funds for a support group. So I thought you can sit down. That's not the only reason I'm running. As a parent of three kids in the Lynn Public Schools, over the past four years, I've been going to school committee meetings. And time after time, I've been really frustrated with the school committee because I've seen them try very, very hard to fight and to advocate what's in the best interest of our kids. And time and time again, they're not able to because they're the losing end of a three, four vote. I want to be their fourth vote. I want to be the voice of the parents in Lynn. I want to make sure that parents have a voice in education, and that their children, and that are heard and listened to. I want parents to know that, I want them to know and feel that they matter, and their contributions are welcome and appreciated. Thank you.
Hey, everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight. Thank you for coming out tonight. And I'd like to thank the LCA, Cleo Haraford for helping tonight, Lynn Camp. His album is Always from Lynn Happens for helping to keep the community informed. My name is Rick Starmer. I'm currently seeking my third term as a member of the Lynn School Committee, a job that I really love and I have a passion for. I'm a lifelong Lynn resident. I attended and graduated from Lynn Tech. Two years after I graduated, I started my own company, Rixal with collision repair, a company I've had now for 30 years. During 13 and a half of those 30 years, I spent going back to tech as a full-time collision repair instructor. When I needed to leave to get back to my business after an expansion, I saw some things that were going on that concerned me, began to vote get, and the closing of some programs that concerned me. Programs that were being closed in the hot of a recession at a time when some of the most difficult jobs to fill in America in the deepest part of that recession were those programs, was machine shop, engineering. By getting elected, and that's one of the things that made me run for school committee, we were able to keep the engineering program open. We reopened the machine shop program. Both of those programs are doing quite well. I've been married to my beautiful wife Lois for the past 27 years. Together, we've raised two amazing daughters, both products of the Lynn school system. My 19-year-old daughter Stephanie graduated Lynn English last year. My 21-year-old daughter just graduated English in '09. Both college students, both doing quite well. I would like to remain on the school committee and finish doing some of the work that we've started advocating for the replacement of schools, and we need to do it in an educated way. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Stanley Watrin. I don't speak the best. I don't even like to sound the moon voice. But, you know, I have a blog, Lynn School Watch. I've got over 3,000 postings. I've been going to all the Lynn School Committee meetings the past three and a half years. I've written all kinds of stuff in the item, and I've got about 40 pages of my autobiography on wordcraft right now. I would like to always stick it up. I am very passionate about education, and I am an equal opportunity offender. I've upset a lot of people. But I am a psychology major, graduated from West Virginia, was in college, and I can make chemistry minor. That's what I was before my accident. It was an automobile accident in 1961. I was in a coma for 11 days. And actually, the best thing that ever happened to me because it has given me a unique perspective on ways to look at things. You know, I think with the chemistry mind, when I look at these budgets, I break down things to the elemental part. And, you know, it's not always what you think it ends up being. I decided to run for school committee because I got nothing else to do. I appreciate one of your six votes. Thank you, Lorraine.
We will now start with the question and answer portion of our forum. If the audience could just hold their applause during the questions so we can get through as many questions as possible, that would be greatly appreciated.
That was John Ford.
For the first question, we'll start with Lorraine Gately. The Lynn Public School System is currently a Level 4 district with 12 Level 3 schools and two Level 4 schools. How much emphasis do you place on these accountability rankings as determined by the State Department of Education? Do you believe that the number of Level 3 and 4 schools within LPS is an area of concern?
Well, to be a Level 4 district, you have to have just one school that has a Level 4, which is my good. We happen to have two schools that are Level 4s. And I believe over the past three, two or three years, since they have been Level 4s, and I believe with Conry and Harrington. And since they have been Level 4s, they have made great strides in improving their test scores, in improving their school content. What the other schools are doing, I believe, is the wraparound race for the top has a component called the wraparound zone. And that wraparound zone is trying to instruct teachers how to implement new and different strategies to help students to learn better or to learn differently. I believe that's what's going on. No one's happy to have a Level 3 school. No one's happy to have anything but a Level 1 or 2. And the district is working very good, very hard to improve on that. I know myself, my personal experience is with the NCAS, some tests in the eighth grade. And I have been meeting with people at Pickering, and I'm working my butt off. The strands have, you can see the improvement year after year by name, my TBI. Thank you.
So it's absolutely an area of concern. Lorraine was talking about Harrington and Conry. They are making great strides now. Because they failed, they got $1.1 million that the rest of our schools didn't get. So it's a huge area of concern because these are elementary schools. It's not high schools that are failing. It's our elementary schools. Our kids learn to read in elementary school. We're failing our kids in their infancy. We're failing our kids, and it affects their entire career. I've had many conversations with Cleo and other Lynn alum that they weren't prepared for college. They had to take, they had to retake, I was going to say, they had to retake English because they weren't prepared. So it's a huge concern. On the flip side, we get a lot of money to fail. We might as well fail to get that money, to restart, to start over. I wouldn't recommend it, but I feel like, how else are we going to get out of this? I feel like they're doing so well because they got the money. I don't want our kids to fail, not at all. But they're going to keep failing. We have another school, there's two already that are Level 4. We have another school that's teetering on the edge. It's a horrible thing that we're failing. We need to do more to stop the failing, especially at such a low, especially at the elementary school level. Again, those schools are doing better because they have $1.1 million. Which any of our schools would do better with $1.1 million?
Again, to reiterate what this lady, Mrs. Gormanello, said, nobody wants to see Level 4 school. Nobody wants to see Level 3 school. But let me tell you, they're not Level 3 and 4 schools for lack of effort because our teachers go in and work their hearts out, day in and day out. You know, I don't think I have to point out the challenges that they face in this system. And at the end of the day, we get compared to the Lynn fields of the world. Not that we should be using that as a crutch, but it is a cold hard fact. And as Mrs. Gormanello pointed out, when schools do hit Level 4, the money comes in. So we have seen great turnarounds in Conry and Harrington because that money came as a result of that. The money came in, class sizes went down, staff came in, more training, extended programs. You know, if we could do that in every school, we would have Level 2 schools throughout the city. But the reality of the situation is, the money just isn't there unless you're fit. What we need to do is have kids start learning early. You know, we get kids that are in low-income communities, they're starting school at two or three years old, you know? So they come into our schools, some without pre-K, they start off at kindergarten. They're already two years behind year ball. We need to start teaching parents. So the parents are reading to their kids at night. So their kids are better prepared to come to school and learn. You can't expect these people to take these kids at five and make roadblocks out.
Yeah, it's crazy to me if anybody could think it's okay to be Level 4. You know, it's not so much the money that we have or don't have. It's money that we've got that we are misappropriating. With the race to the top money, where have we gotten since we got raised up? We went down. You know, we used to be the best of the worst schools, but now we're not even the best. And, you know, we started on this wraparound program. They first went to Tennessee that were thinking that was the catch me out. Then, next year, they went to Colorado through Arizona because Arizona's program. And, you know, we only have a year left of funding for that program. And it's very expensive, very expensive. And when that race to the top money goes, you know, we're left holding back these new positions that we're going to have to fill, and there's no money. There's no money. So we need to get back to basics. I think we need to put more direct services in the classroom, get
I think that the system is flawed. If you are Level 4, you obtain all the resources. And that is the message that we are sending to our school system. We have two schools who are Level 4, Harrington and Conry. So those two schools, they have all the resources, like all the colleges, send right now. And one of the questions that we ask the superintendent now is that, she agreed, is in the statement for evaluation, is that all the schools who are Level 3, they go home, according to the superintendent, receive the same resource that we have right now, Level 4 schools. So that means that we're going to have over there, after school program, we're going to have a parent with, be involved in the education of the children. We're going to have more specialists over there, case managers over there, and we're going to have more other resources. If we have the money, what the superintendent said, that she agreed, that all the schools who are Level 3 is going to have the same resource. That means that we are going to provide better services to our school. As Ricky Estabas said, we have great teachers, but there are a lack of resources. And that is the issue that we have in our school system. So parents need to be more aggressive in asking for more. So what part of the case will that you do?
The staff is working, especially the teachers. They go in that classroom and they work really hard. But it is unacceptable to have Level 4 schools. We really needed to put programs in earlier. It's important, this election, who you decide on, who is at the table. We make the policy decisions at the table. And if you can't get the votes to have the programs put in there for the children, whether it's extended day programs, whether it's Saturday programs, whether it's for kids who are exceptional, in either way, whether they're great in the arts, or whether they're great musically, or whether they learn differently, so they're learning in a different way. These programs are only decided at the table. The superintendent will present them, and you must have four votes of seven sit around that table. And it is a hard fight to try to get money changed from one way of spending it to another way of spending it. Yes, a budget comes before us, but the budget is a tight budget, and then we have to decide where things go. I've been frustrated over the years. I mean, Dr. Crane is here in the audience tonight. That red flag comes up awfully fast.
Thank you. So I think it's unanimous. No one at this table thinks it's good that we have two Level 4 schools in Lynn. And in fact, Lynn is not a perfect system. I do want to say, though, that Lynn is an improving system. There have been no schools in the last term that have fell into Level 4. And the two that were in Level 4, Conry and Harrington, are making great strides. The teachers there are working so hard, the parents are very involved. And I go in those schools, do walkthroughs in those schools, and the kids are really learning. So there is room to improve. We should improve. And I think the teachers, the parents, and the students are doing a great job in that respect. You know, scores and rankings are not the only measure. They are one measure. And if we look at the urban districts, Lynn now is at or near the top in every measure. But like I said, scores are not the only thing you need to look at. You need to go into a school, get a feeling for the school, and see, are the kids able to learn? Are the teachers able to teach? We have a total of 26 schools in Lynn. If you walk through them, I think you'll find that that's going on. So we need to keep improving. And like Rick Starmer, I think one of the areas that we can focus on And like Rick Starmer, I think one of the areas that we can focus on is early childhood education. Cleo's blog the other day, some of us responded to a questionnaire, and I said it's a long-term goal, universal pre-k would help this district out hugely. In the interim, I mentioned to you that we have Lynn Tech open at night. We're doing parent-child reading classes. I worked with John Ford and with Councilor Pete Papano, who's here on that. So we need to keep working at it and keep getting better here in Lynn. Thank you.
For our next question, we'll start with Maria Carrasco. There's been a lot of discussion of the challenges that students from immigrant families, particularly those with limited English proficiency, bring to the Lynn public schools. In your view, what are the strengths and assets that these same students and their families bring as well?
I think it was the right person.
Yes.
Well, you know, Lynn is a city that we always see that, that is the reason why we said that we have great teachers. Because when teachers have the right resources, it doesn't matter if you don't speak, the kids don't speak the language. Look at Connery, look at Connery, it's full of immigrant students. And still, they succeed, they are almost level one right now. So that means because they have the resource. I don't see many different, my niece, who was here, and she was a teacher, came here as an immigrant, and she was a teacher, and she's worked for the school department. My children, they grew up here, one was born here. But they, I mean, it's not about immigrant, it's about the resource that we have in our school. And I don't believe kids absorb everything. They are so great and absorb. We need just that right direction for the kids. And we have, we need teachers to have that right resources for those students. It doesn't matter what student, we talk about immigrant, they give it to me. How about the Greek, how about Italian, how about the Russian, how about, you know, it's about, that city is not about just the African students, it's about immigrant students in general, it's about students in particular. I think that we just need to provide the source so they can be future.
Actually, I think that's the best part of our whole school system, is how diverse it is. That was the best thing, when my kids were in school, they were able to go over other kids' homes, learning different things. We go, we travel all over the world to find something like that. It's sitting right here in our own city. Our kids are, you know, if you look at the graduation rates, and you see these kids that are graduating, you know, our valedictorians, our, you know, immigrants that have come from someplace, you know, and some of them are first, first generation, they came themselves. So I think that the teachers we have, if they have, if they're struggling, there's too many in the class, you know, as it starts out, and English is a second language and they need help, then they should, we should be there to give the support. We should be funding that and helping the teachers. Not look at somebody and say, oh, your class didn't make it. No. Teachers should be able to say, you know, 16 out of my 28, our English is a second language. I need somebody for a little bit of help. And, but I think it's the best part of our system. The problem I do have is that we're not hiring enough minority teachers to match the student population.
Thank you. Again, it sounds like a lot of agreement at the table, but what are the great strengths of Lynn's, its diversity? And what are the strengths of the Lynn school system, or several of the strengths of the Lynn school system, are its teachers, its family, and its educators? Many of whom come from very diverse backgrounds. You know, going to school, in the schools in Lynn here, you would pick up different languages. There'd be several languages, not just spoken in your building, but spoken in your classroom. If you go to a friend's house, you might learn about their culture's food, or their culture's art, or you might pick up again some of their language. So it's one of the great strengths we have in Lynn here. We have a very big district with almost 15,000 students, and I think we should be proud of what those 15,000 students do and the accomplishments, not only of them, but their families and their educators.
Well, you're not gonna believe this, but I just had to take the retail course for immigration students or ELL students. And I went to Martha Lock during that class, but I had already, what I found out was that my students that are ELL, are home English language learners. Once I figure out their intelligence, because there's a thing called colored guidance theory of multiple intelligences, once I figure out where they stand in the classroom, I'm able to help them to learn the subject. And I'm glad to report that a lot of them improved greatly over the year. I just love the diversity in the city. I can't tell you how many students have come up to me and said, thank you, Ms. Gately, you are the reason why you're taking biochemistry this year at this college, or doing this at that college. And I just, they're so grateful, they're so kind. I love our school system because we embrace them. We make sure that we train our teachers so that we know how to teach every single individual in our classroom. And I hope I answered that question, but it's just, it's wonderful having this many immigration and ELL students in my classroom. Thank you.
So I actually had the pleasure of working with a family who had just immigrated here from South America. And within two months, the daughter had learned English, and within a year, the mom was working on learning English and becoming an American citizen. The American citizen test is really hard, and you have to take it in English, you can't take it in your foreign language. Our population of immigrants is some of the hardest working people in our city. They work incredibly hard, and they came here for a better life. They came here to give their kids the education they could get wherever they were coming from. I knew that we need to continue to support those efforts. I think we need to embrace that immigration community. I took a tour with Dr. Crane one night of her ESL program at night, I was amazed by it. She was able to eliminate one teaching position, and she used that money to fund her entire ESL program. Not only did she fund that program and hire the people to teach her second language, but she also funded daycare, so all of these hardworking families could bring their kids at night access to the English language, English second language program, without having to pay for daycare. It was an amazing program. And I think that, and I think Dr. Crane knows that, and I think her retiring, you know, I hope that program continues. But our immigrant, our immigrant population is, it is our population, they are the majority. And I think embracing them and encouraging them to become citizens, and to work, and to learn English, and to contribute to our city, is one of the answers of our city. Thank you.
One of the things I tell everybody outside the cities, and I also told my kids this as they were going through school, you are getting an education in diversity that you can't take for. It puts them leaps and bounds ahead of the kids that are in the suburbs, especially when it comes time to go to, go to college. And, you know, my oldest, she started off in a school in Manhattan. And to, the fear that they have, they're a kid in the middle of Manhattan, but I knew she was in the real world because she grew up in the real world. That being said, it's a struggle in our schools. And kids do pick up the language faster than adults. But, you know, as I said earlier, we need to have kids prepared to learn. I would be more in favor of having programs for immigrant kids to focus on English before we focus on anything. Because we put kids that just come into this country, I don't care what language they speak, they just come into this country, we put them in a classroom with English-speaking kids, an English-speaking teacher, that class is slowed down to accommodate that student. If that kid knew English, or had a better grasp of the language going into that class, they could hit the ground running and be that far ahead. My wife worked at Drews this year in a kindergarten class, and told me how they had a kid, a girl spoke Swahili. Couldn't speak any English at the beginning of the year, but by the end of the year, she was speaking it quite well. They will learn it, but we need to focus on English first.
Like Mrs. Carrasco, two came from another country. I am originally from West Virginia. That is a whole nother country, a whole nother way of life. But, you know, over the years, I have found the best way to overcome obstacles is to embrace them. You know, we should be thrilled, like Rick said, you know, if kids got education they can't pay for, couldn't have paid for. You know, it's, the differences mean energy. Energy is what we need in our schools. And, you know, a lot of what he said, you know, is, is good, we need to make sure these kids know how to speak English so that they don't slow down the other kids. But, you know, we should be very thankful that we've got such a diverse population.
Next, we'll start with Rick Starmer. The Lynn's School Committee Manual reads in part, "The committee is responsible for providing adequate and direct means for keeping this local citizen free involved about the schools. However, a lack of or poor communication from the schools and district is an issue often raised by parents. What changes, if any, do you think are necessary at both the district and individual school level to ensure that all parents, including those who do not speak English, are kept well informed of all district slash school events, activities, and changes, as well as their child's progress?"
Well, I think in some schools, cultures exist in some that don't exist in others that make that school more welcoming. You know, I talked to a woman I serve on the Lynn Tech alumni board, but she's on the PTO calendar, and she was telling me one of their concerns, replacing the principal, oh, maybe they're not, the new principals not gonna be as welcoming to what we do. We have, I don't know, Boo Boo Day for the kindergarten parents, you know, when they drop the kids off, we have breakfast for them and invite them into, into the PTO and get them involved in the school. And I think there are other schools that have active PTOs going on because they feel welcomed by that principal. And it's not to say that the other principals, the newer principals, where those programs didn't exist prior to them coming there, wouldn't be welcoming. It's nobody's going and opening up that line of communication, they don't feel that comfortable. You know, Dr. Crane is probably one of the most welcoming principals we have in the city. She's gonna be leading. I would assume that the Highland Coalition will, will make their presence known and get to know that principal quickly. But I think maybe we ought to have a program for new principals coming in. And, you know, make part of their, their coming into that new school to open up to the parents, have a parent night, where they can come in and meet that principal prior to school opening up, and then those parents will feel comfortable, more welcome.
I, this is a big one for me. Now, I write comments about this, about the need for communication between the schools. I think Marshall has an excellent Facebook page. And that, that way, people get informed of all the positive things that are happening. There are some other schools, like Freed has their, they have a sign. And Pickering has a Facebook group, and they share information that way. I think we need to share information multiple, multiple ways. They've got the connected program, these principals ought to be communicating with everybody, well, at least once a week. I know at Pickering, the principal there, you know, he would, would wish my son to get the better of him because they have MCAS coming up tomorrow. We just need constant, constant communication through the phone, through Facebook, through, you know, letters from the backpack. And we just need to be talking.
In 2007, I became, for the first time, a school committee member. And communication between parents and teachers in the school in general was one of the kids that I met up. And I was able, without a grip or a goal, the school committee members to have what we call an open mind, where people can bring ideas, and also feel, and be listened by all the members of the school community. But I have to tell you that the superintendent is the person who hires principals. We need to set up line, and see if, during interviews, it's gonna interview, maybe two principals now, it's gonna hire a new principal. During interviews for principals, we'd be good that we made in the curriculum that principals should be part of the community, not just living after three o'clock is over. You know what I mean? Many principals, after three o'clock, you don't see them. But we also want parents to feel welcome in the school. Some parents, they don't feel welcome in the school. It may be because we have in our school system, 14,000, 500 students, almost 15,000. And, okay, many of the students are minority, and they speak English, but how about the parents? Maybe they don't speak English. So if you intimidate, they are not able to communicate. And that is the reason why we fight for translators, interpreters, and have everything set up. But also, even if it's translation, we need to be sensitive, body language talking. When you translate and you don't feel, people can feel like you don't care about what's going on.
Parent involvement is really, really important. And it is our job to communicate and get the message out to them in many different ways. I mean, our home system is set up that the calls can come directly home to the parents. They are able to, even if it's, even if there's, they're not home, it can be left on an answering machine. The other thing is, we have a new evaluation system for the teachers and the principals. And one of the things that we decided on the superintendents was communication, getting messages out, how do we communicate, have more meetings for parents to hear more things. And they, and they don't need to just hear, you know, Jim is on Friday, remember their sneakers. They need more things that are gonna really help us improve those level fours or three schools, or bring every school enough to the best in their potential. You know, we, I said, I had a chance to sit on the Ed reform with New Commission when I was appointed by Yoda while I was a long time ago. And, you know, everybody knows from that, we had MCAS. You know, then came No Child Left Behind, then came, you know, Race to the Top. We now have another new one that is coming out right now, that's from the federal government, and it's, you know, common for state standards. And so that every state will be unequal, you know, so it doesn't look like Massachusetts maybe is top in the task, but some other state is in the bottom. Again, I didn't finish.
Thank you. You know, I think it boils down to being open, to being transparent, to being responsive. When I announced my candidacy in 2011, school committee meetings were not even available online. In my speech that night, excuse me, not available on television. In my speech that night, I called for them to be televised, called for that again, or was like this, and it actually happened during the campaign. When I got up to seat at the table, one of the first things I did was to pass a motion to make school committee meetings available online, both live and archived, so you can watch it anytime. So the parents, community members, you know what's going on. Every day, I respond to someone, whether it's through email, telephone call, social media, Facebook and Twitter, or face-to-face meeting. I also go to a myriad of events, whether they're in the schools or in the community. But that's really not enough. You also have to seek, and what, Councilor-at-Large Dan Cahill was here tonight, and when you talked about a site for the new Marshall Middle School, Councilor Cahill and I hit the streets. We knocked on doors in the neighborhood before we took a vote, to make sure that neighbors were comfortable with the location of that school. So it's about being responsive, but it's also about reaching out. Thank you.
Could you read the question again?
The Lynn's, the Lynn's School Committee Manual reads in part, "The committee is responsible for providing adequate and direct means for keeping this local citizen free involved adequate and direct means for keeping the local citizenry involved at the schools. However, a lack of or poor communication from the schools and district is an issue often raised by parents. What changes, if any, do you think are necessary at both the district and individual school level to ensure that all parents, including those who do not speak English, are kept well informed of all school slash district events, activities, and changes, as well as their child's progress?"
To answer that question, the first thing I would do as a school committee member is I would slow down the voting process at these school committee meetings. Perfect example of that was what happened with the kindergarten students and the vote to go into Linn Tech on the second floor. Um, vote was taken pretty quick, and people didn't have a chance to process, and I mean school committee didn't have a real chance to process, it seems to me, they didn't have a real chance to process the information. They didn't have a chance to really absorb what was going on and take a look and think, "Well, these little five-year-old kids, and where are they going to be, and what are they going to do?" Um, and when I went to that meeting, the second meeting, and a lot of people were there, I'm very upset, that's what I thought would be a way to improve the communication. Give people the opportunity to take a second, to take a week, then listen to the constituents and see what you want them to do, so that they would make the right decision, and they wouldn't have to have anybody get so upset. So that would be one way. I don't know how much time I have left. Okay. But also, um, as Stanley said, we have Connected Ed, we have parent involvement, we have Great Book Online, most of the schools are going to get Great Book Online, and most school websites are trying to put a homework online.
Thank you. Sorry, guys, I just got to turn on personal, Braden, 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 somebody's going to get your bike. That's what I'm trying to touch, Seth, come on. Sorry, I'm sorry about that, guys. Okay, so, so I'm just going to jump right into this and talk kind of really fast. So before the school took it upon themselves to televise them, I actually met Seth and Stan through going and televising the school committee events on our own. Seth wanted to put it on his blog, the Linn Happens, and he didn't have anyone to go do it, so I volunteered. I went every Tuesday to video tape that, and then I gave it to him every day so he could put it on his site. We did this on our own, and we did this outside of the building's school department, and I think actually kind of prompted them to start doing it on their own, because they found out that other people were doing it for them. Um, Marshall has a great Facebook page. I think all of our schools should really utilize Facebook and put out all that great information. I think this board needs to have more transparency. This board goes into what's called executive session, where they discuss salaries and collective bargaining. The public only has access to those records once a year. They could have access to those records quarterly. Why not? Why not make those records available quarterly, so there is more transparency, so we can see what's going on? Um, open mic, it's only fifteen minutes at the beginning of every school committee meeting. Where's the back and forth? I can't tell you how many parents I've spoken to and I've seen who've shown up and said, "I didn't even know I'm here, because you're not going to talk back to me." Or the parents send emails to the school committee and they're ignored. Or the bloggers that send emails to the entire school department and they're ignored. There's a ton of room, and I didn't even get into that we're not compliant with translation services. I didn't even tell you about the parent I had to go to their IEP meeting and have them fight to get their IEP translated because they couldn't read it. How can they help their kids if they can't even read the plan? Thank you. That's everybody's story, yeah, that was everybody's story, guys. I'm sorry.
Next we'll start with Charlie Young. The Marshall Middle School Building Project was first initiated in 2008. Five years later, a new school has yet...
Can't hear you, ma'am.
Five years later, a new school has yet to be built, with three more years predicted before the school opened, and so many others in serious need of repair or replacement. Is there anything, in your opinion, that could have been done differently to move the process of building a new school along much more quickly and efficiently?
Thank you for the question. Um, when the project started, I wasn't there in 2000. A few people around the table were, I didn't start until 2012. But since then, I can tell you, we've been working diligently on Marshall and, um, working not only to, to find a site for Marshall, but also to get funding. Particularly, we're applying for funding through the state, through the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which will reimburse the city eighty cents on the dollar for a new Marshall. Now, we haven't had a new school in a long time, since 1999, which was the New Classical, and this time, I think we need to do it right. I believe, or spoke about earlier, reaching out to the neighbors, finding out what they want in their school in terms of location. We're going to need to do the same thing when we start talking about curriculum there. Marshall is probably the most important project for the schools right now, and what's, what's odd about it is the school committee won't really be voting much on it in the future. It'll be up to, to the public to vote on it, whether or not to approve a bond, and so I'll just take this opportunity to say, when that vote comes before you, I hope that you will vote in favor of that bond and have Marshall be the next new school in Linn. Marshall is going to be the first in a line of new schools. Next, we'll have Pickering in the pipeline, after that, some of our elementary schools, perhaps Tracy and Westlin or Cobbitt. But our schools need repair, and we need to rebuild, and we need to ask voters for their help in doing that. Thank you.
A little history about the rebuilding in Linn. Um, we started out, we reworked Lynn English High School. Anybody that went to Lynn English High School know that where the gym is now used to be tennis courts. Um, then we went into Lynn Classical, and that turned out to be a debacle, a mess, and we had to fix that problem. So during that time, I believe in 2008, we finally got our Thurgood Marshall project into the pipeline, and as Charlie has said, they've been going diligently around to find the perfect spot. Um, they checked out the inside of the school, the state did, and, um, actually, I can't remember the name of this thing, give me a second. The Mass School Building Authority, they're the ones that are in the pipeline, get in the pipeline, and then they look at the criteria and they say, "This school cannot be refurbished. This school has to be made brand-new." And it's urgent, because as soon as we finish with Thurgood Marshall, we'll then move on to Pickering, and then we start to go after, not go after, but start to look at elementary schools. We need to really focus on this, and we need your support and your votes to push this project through, and it will be up to you. And at this time, I think everybody at this table would want that. I believe, right? When you want a new Thurgood Marshall, and don't ask if this is a thing.
I think we all want new schools. I think we want all, we all want all the new schools. Um, so a couple of things that the general public might not know. It'll be, it'll be forty years before we get four schools built. What's going to happen to the Ford School? What's going to happen to Tracy? Rick was showing me pictures on his computer. And the Tracy School, there's, there's two classrooms, where the kids and the teachers sit on the floor, because there's not enough room for desks. It's totally unacceptable. And again, we have so little control over that as a school, maybe because the money's not in our hands. You guys have control over that. It's going to be who you vote for for city council. It's going to be what you say to your city council members about what they do with their money. Thank you.
Can I buy five minutes? Because he's going to kill her. My slogan is, "Even if you don't vote for me, vote for ours, because we got to get this thing done." It's going to take eight years from the time of planning in '08 to 2016, when we put kids in the seats in that school. We've got schools that are terrible in this, in this city. Pickering, Tracy, Cobbitt, by far the four worst schools. If we go along that, that, that trend, we're 2040 before we replace the worst of our four schools. What are the conditions of the schools that we think, uh, right now going to be in 2040? I called the MSBA last year, and they said, "We could apply to more than one school, we just had to prioritize one." Brought that back to the committee, the mayor appointed a committee of school committee members, uh, city councilors, some parents, Natasha was there with us as we went touring these schools, a parent of each one of, uh, Pickering, Tracy, Cobbitt, and, and I took pictures along the way. I'll show you some, the floral pictures. You know, we say Pickering's going to be next, but anybody can make the argument that any one of those four schools is just as bad or worse than any of the others. And we've got to do something to get these schools replaced before 2040, and the city doesn't have the money to do it, the state doesn't have the money to do it, but you know what? This city helped put John Tierney, Elizabeth Warren, Ed Markey in their seats. So stop banging their doors, it's time for the feds to step up and start putting some money into it.
Geez, I'll go get mine, that was good. Rick has been out front on this issue for a long time. Okay? Realistically, you know, um, Marshall is not going to solve all of our problems, because we've got a lot of schools that are, you know, that need replacement. You looked at the town lines in the item, I need the other day. We got two schools that were built in the eighteen hundreds, okay? It is true, uh, you know, Rick's right, you know, we need to get some of the other people to step up and, and help us out, but, you know, a lot of people say that, but, you know, where is it happening? When you, if I am elected, or when I'm elected, uh, I'm not going to, I'll write letters to those people and make calls to those people, and you all will know because I'm famous for putting my letters on mine so everybody can see. Um, you know, we need new schools, but we need to work to get them. You know, we need to actually, uh, you know, I have cataracts, I can't see that well, so it doesn't matter. All right, well, I'm done, I'm done.
I must agree with everybody around here, because it's, it's a shame to have schools where they, just one toilet for kindergarten students, classroom. Um, and that cupboard, you go there, and you're going to see that, even if they try to replace the windows outside, inside is a shame to go there, and it's, it's amazing what's going on over there. And that is something that, if I, I talk about cupboard, because I was able to get there inside, go to the basement, where it's a place where you don't want to send your kids. But, and, one time I was there, and we were working together, one organization that we belong to, the New League Coalition, we went to Boston, asked that trade unit over there to see if they were able to do some kind of free jobs over there. Do you know what they said? That they, that school was not, they could not even get in, because that school was not safe. So it is not safe for adults to go there, to work in the school, do something clear. Do you believe it's safe for all the students? But if we condemn the schools, where are the students going to be? Because it's no place to send the students. So, yes, we have to vote, we have to make everything as possible to get a Marshall school, because if we don't get Marshall school, we don't want to get the other four schools that we believe is going to be in, at all. So, please, thinking about Marshall school, like the first step, and then we're going to go to the other school. We need that. Thank you.
First of all, I have to say that, I have said I'm not the committee for a while, and it is up to the mayor. They're the chair of our committee, and this mayor, I must give credit to Mayor Flanagan Kennedy for, um, taking the initiative and saying, "We need to stop the schools." Uh, the last chair of the committee, the last mayor, um, did not think that this was all that important, and so you can have everybody at the table here who wants it, but unless the mayor, who's sitting in City Hall, and the council are willing, uh, to support it, it's not going to happen. So that's an important vote, too. But, uh, the big thing is, I, um, lived, my, three of my kids, the oldest kids, went to Lynn Classical on the corner, and for years, uh, the Classical PTA fought to try to get a new Classical. And, um, you know, they didn't think that we really needed it, the numbers were small there. Um, I lived where the new Classical was built. I lived there for quite a while, and, um, it changed the whole neighborhood. That one new school brought so many new homes built there, and so many families moved to that area because they took pride in that new building. So you, we must get, uh, the new school, the Marshall, so it's an important vote. Thank you.
Next we'll start with Melissa Romanella. Linn's school improvement plans, which the school committee has the full authority to either approve or reject, largely focus on increasing MCAS exam provision barriers. In your opinion, does this indicate that non-tested subjects or grades are being deprioritized or deemphasized within LPS due to state mandated standardized testing goals? Should our city's school improvement plans address education in all grades, subject matters, and skill areas?
Yeah, I think they should. I don't think that, I don't think because of the MCAS that we're just teaching to the MCAS. Um, I, I really, really don't. But what I do, what, I don't know if I can, I don't know if I can answer your question, because what I, I like to say about the school improvement plans is that our schools need school improvement councils, and we're actually mandated to. And about a third, only a third of our schools actually have school improvement councils. Two-thirds of our schools don't even have them. So I think in order to address whether or not we're teaching to all of our subjects versus MCAS, we would need to address the fact that our schools don't even have the councils to ask that question. We're only asking a third of those schools. We're not asking all of them. As a, as a parent who's got kids in the Linn Public School, my kids are taught every subject. I wish there was more funding for more subjects, I wish there was more funding for the arts and after-school programs, and more field trips, all of those things. But no, our kids are absolutely not just being taught the MCAS. I do believe that we should, we should be compliant, though, and have school, and school improvement councils at each of the schools, so we can ask each of the schools. At this point, we can't even ask. Thank you.
Um, I, I'm not sure that teachers are, are being told to, to back off, or less emphasis is put on, um, say, history or, or anything, because if, if you're a history teacher, you, you think your subject is, is the most important, and, and I don't think that our history teachers, the government teachers, are, are stepping back because it's not, it's not yet a mandate. Will be, but it's, it's not yet a mandate. Um, but the, the problem is, our, our kids are being taught to the test, and then they're being over-recessed and over-data-collected, to the point where our teachers really aren't teaching. It, I don't think they're, they're really teaching from a heart, the way that, that they really thought they were going to be, or maybe the way that, that all the teachers did in the beginning. And that's because of all the data collecting, and you become, oh, data collecting, you're producing paper. Even I did it, in tech. People ask me, "Oh, do you miss teaching?" "Oh, I miss the kids. I miss the kids." I'm like, "Yeah, I don't miss the paperwork." Um, because that's what it's become about, you know, collecting data and writing about teaching. Um, so that's a problem, you know, with MCAS. And I'm not saying that MCAS is the worst thing in the world, because in some respects it has raised the bar. It's certainly raised the bar as far as academics and vocational environment, because the kids have to pass the same test, but we, we have to give the teachers some freedom to teach, and we've got to back off of all this data.
It's not correct to follow them. I think, uh, there's too many, you know, a lot of this is a fundamental, uh, uh, structure, that the problem is that, um, we are trying to objectify subjective things, like you can't quantify, uh, intelligence to, to do in the same way all the time. Uh, we need variety, and, uh, that's what a school improvement council would do, and I'm not sure if there's actually any... And I'm not sure if there's actually any school in this city that has a legitimate school improvement council, maybe one or two. I served on the student improvement council at Ford. And I'm not sure, I mean, I think ours and maybe Shoemaker, there's only a couple in compliance. We have, what, twenty-six schools? How can you get parents involved if you don't give them, let them have a way to be involved? I can't give a cataract gift. Yeah, I think we need to really, really, really establish those in all the schools.
I think that we are, that we have saw up and down in science. And we work on that issues. As a Marica, I heard a superintendent said that she's gonna try to hire somebody, she been trying to hire somebody that's comprehensive, because we have trouble. But we also have trouble with the MCAS, something that is known that we're ahead because we have to comply. And teachers really don't have enough time. I think it's about say, Melissa, and it's time. So we all agree that MCAS is what made many teachers not able to provide all the necessary classes that they need or time for all the curriculum. But really, we don't, we don't do so bad. We can do better, yes. Can we have more time for kids, more resource? Yes, because we have a lot of resource for math. We have a lot of resource for English. We should have more resource for science, history. So, and it's bad, but it's going right now. We want a, that's part of, uh, go to the superintendent to hire somebody who's gonna be in charge of the science degree.
As I said, there is a little change happening. So it looks as though MCAS won't be in the future, but there'll still be a form of test. And I really forget how you say it. I didn't know how to use initials, but it's like, it was P-A-R-C-C. I do remember that C is for career and college. And the way they're looking to look at it now is, you know, to prepare our students so they're prepared for career and they're prepared for college. So it'll be a little different from the way they did MCAS. It's also supposed to have, be allowed for creativity, more critical thinking, just a different way of looking at it. And then, you know, as I originally said on this common core of state standards, is where they're gonna try so that you can compare states and be equal testing. So I think it's a different way of coming. It's gonna be a problem for the middle school system in that the test is gonna be online for the students. And we're a community that's really behind in the technology we have in our schools. And it's gonna be online from third grade on up. So we can't just say, "Well, we'll get all those computers over in, you know, the high schools and we won't worry." No, you need to have them there. Again, I didn't get to finish it.
Thank you. You know, numbers are important. We'd be lying to ourselves if we sat here and said they were. But they're not the only measure of how a school's doing. Again, what really matters is when you go into a school, are the students able to learn? Do the teachers have all the tools they need to teach? We have to prepare our students for the MCAS exam, but we also have to prepare them and provide a well-rounded education. And on this last term on the school committee, we've tried to do that in a few different ways. One, the proposed budget includes significant increases in the arts. We're gonna provide new instruments and new uniforms. Two, we now have a grant fundraiser who's going to be working particularly in the area of performing arts, trying to help bring up and build up that program in our schools. And three, we've been working on a number of partnerships. We introduced a program called Student Safety Nights where elementary school students and parents come and talk with the police and fire departments about how to stay safe over the summer. We had a business in it, Salvy the Florist, that came and taught the elementary school students about plants and about science in that way. We've teamed with Arts After Hours, who provided tickets to our middle school students to some of their programs to expose them to the performing arts. Counselor Brendan Crichton and I worked together to actually bring a positive RAP group into our middle schools, and it was a great success. So there are a number of things we can do. Numbers are important, but they're not the all and all. And we need to be sure that we're exposing our students to the arts and providing a well-rounded education.
I think that was the name of that group was Gaye and Juliette. Gaye and Juliette, both of them are my students. And I love them. But I always take that a lot, but if you know me, you know, Gaye and Juliette could date many lots of students. So that going on. At Pickering, we do have a campaign. We do analyze the data. I think that we did that in other schools. So you analyze the data and you see how we can improve on those test scores. Personally, I think that you need to also include an extracurricular within your subject area, which I like to do. And Charlie has been by my class once or twice, and he has seen the projects that are in my room and things that are up in the walls. And I wish every teacher would do that with every class because, again, we're back to how we got into multiple intelligence. And if you use all of the different tools for the students' intelligence, they learn it so much easier. And you'll notice that they'll take the time to actually wanna come back after school because I ran a six-weeks program before the MCAS test after school. They wanna come after school. They wanna do better on the test. And they wanna show you that they understood the concepts that you were teaching. So I think it's a mixture of both. We have to analyze that data so we can locate the weakness of the individual. And then we have to come up with a way to reach them so we can actually teach everyone, all the students. Am I up to the grade yet? Okay. As far as science is concerned, that's my little pet. I love science and I work really hard in science. And we'll address that another time later.
We will now end our forum with ninety-second closing statements. We'll start with Stanley Walter.
It's one of the few times, you've been having a W for your last name gets reversed. I would like to thank everyone for coming out here and listening to us. My campaign manager couldn't be here tonight because he was dancing in the dugout of the Navigator's Gym. And one of the things that Charlie didn't mention, the Navigators actually, I asked Bill, like, he's your manager, and if he wanted to speak to the school committee, Donald Cabo put him on the agenda. And consequently, with Dr. Lathem's help, every fifth grader in the city of Lynn, about eighteen hundred kids, we got to see a game, made a special leg right of passage. And I would like the opportunity to be on the committee rocket, get more things like that going on in the city, in our schools. So come, never, uh, fifth in, I'd like one of your six votes and please vote to on September seventeenth. I'd like to be up there. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Once again, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. And thank everyone for their efforts in putting this together. It's great to be able to come out and share our thoughts and give you all an idea of what we're all about. I like what I do, you know? I've been at it for three and a half years, and I think I've done a pretty good job of helping expand programs for tech. I'm continually fighting to expedite replacement of our aging schools. I've worked with the webmaster to put the LPS policy manual online to make it easy for people to navigate through and find out answers to their questions. I've worked with the SPED PAC and the SPED Department to help repair that relationship between those two, and that's working out well. I've advocated since I've been on to fix the inequities that existed in the superintendent's evaluation. And I think we've come a long way to doing that. When I attended the Council of Labs debate here a couple of weeks back, and I don't wanna slate anyone, but it was either Paul Crowley or Clay Walsh that had said, you know, "We have a bunch of unique, individual people running for office, and it's quite the same here. And everybody here is running for the right reasons. We all want to help move LPS forward in the best way that we can." So, you know, listen to each and every one of us. Check out our website. Talk to us. Ask us questions. And I hope I'm one of your six votes in September and November. Thank you.
Not to write on Stan and Rick's hotels, but they're actually right. Thank all of you for coming. And I actually challenge you to come to the next debate and to bring a friend, bring two of your friends. We need new faces. We need more people interested in politics and the school committees and city councils. We need, we need interested people voting and trying to change Lynn for the better. I'm sure all of you know that schools are our number-one indicators for property value. Even if the family who's moving in Lynn doesn't have kids, they always ask the realtor, "How are the schools?" And that's because they know that the next family coming in is going to have kids. I know I asked about schools when I moved here. I truly feel that this committee's most important job is selecting a superintendent. The superintendent gets paid more than our mayor. The superintendent has control of our schools, which, again, is the number-one indicator of property values. We can turn Lynn around if we can turn our schools around. I think running for school committee and changing this is one of the most important things I can do to help you. I've got flyers on the back table. I'd love you guys to check out my email. Love you guys in the mail with questions. And I'd love your vote. Thank you guys very much.
I totally agree with you. Because I happen to have that internal that's that number-one factor in property value in our schools. And I just, our schools are so important. And I just really wanna thank every person on the school committee that has worked for us for the past two years. They've worked hard, and they really do. I don't think there's a person amongst us that doesn't care about the students of Lynn. I would like one of your six votes. I wanna be on that school committee. I wanna help move this city forward. I wanna take my unique experience as being a student of Lynn Public Schools. Proud of that. I'm also a teacher, as you know. I have a box to tell you about my son, who just graduated Lynn English High School, not in 2013. I can't believe I forgot my son. But I do. Because I think about the students, I really like, oh yeah, he's on Lynn, who's my mom. But I'm really proud of him. And Lynn Public Schools helped him along, and he is now going to college heavily off in September. And he wants to continue in education and following my family's footsteps. So I really would appreciate one of your six votes. And I think everyone here does care. And I wanna thank you, Mary and Cleo again, for having us. Appreciate it.
So first and foremost, thank you to everyone for being here. You should be commended for being here and being informed voters. And if you're here working on a campaign or working for a candidate, you should be commended for being involved in that process. To learn more about my campaign, I have a website, wwwcharliegallow.com. I'm on Facebook or Twitter. You can call or email me. Whether we're talking about property values, or employment, or college for our graduates, the future of this city depends on its schools. I hope that I've shown you tonight that I've worked hard to make education better in Lynn. And to continue to do that, I need your support. The primary election is Tuesday, September seventeenth. The general election is Tuesday, November fifth. On those days, I respectfully ask for one of your six votes. Thank you.
I appreciate everybody coming here. Again, my name is Joanna Capola, and I am looking for one of your six votes. I have love serving on the committee. I have high energy and have a lot of hope to still see all the programs that we need in the schools to stay there. And, you know, the things that are so important to me is the academic excellence, the getting new buildings, programs, policy, all of what you want. But the taxpayer money is really important. Let's bring this city back to where it was before and let, have people that really wanna send their kids. You know, and as Maria said before, we have almost fifteen thousand kids in our school system. People do care that their kids are here in the school system, and we're proud to have them. But let's have everybody be proud of the community. Sometimes we go and people aren't so proud to think that of our schools. And we do have good schools. I have loved serving on the school committee, and it is, has been an honor. So just ask for one and six votes. And please vote for the new governor. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. I feel grateful for the opportunity that you've provided to us to be here, thank you Mary, and Cleo, and all of the committee. Even if I said thank you, I'm shaking every time that I feel like I have to be in front of you, but I have no choice. So I want to continue, so I have to fight for what I want to. Some people, they say, I just want to make sure that you know how we vote. Because we all want to be able to continue in our, as a member of the school committee. And I want to continue. But please make sure that you're gonna vote for candidates who support issues that affect our students overall. We need to support candidates that when they make a motion and they vote for that motion, that, that issue is gonna affect our students, it's gonna affect teachers, it's gonna affect the powers. I feel so bad that when I vote to have a kindergarten on the second floor of, in the commissary, I vote because it didn't have time to vote. But I promise you that if it's have any capacity on me, I'm gonna continue fighting to see how can we make different settings and locations where our students don't have to go buses. And I just feel like, my, please, I want to continue fighting. Vote for, give me one of your six votes, September seventeenth and November fifth. Thank you very much.